Here we go. I'm not seeing it here. There we go. Well, good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals this November 9th, 2023. My name is Steve DeYoung, and I have the pleasure of chairing this committee. And so we're now going to go through a statement that I'm required to read to you by the governor. Bear with me. My name is Steve DeYoung. I'm the chairman of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We will now convene the November 9 meeting of the zoning board of appeals as required by General Law, Chapter 30A. Can we quiet this mic down a little? It sounds like, maybe it's my ears are just getting better. Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 and/or watch it and participate in the meeting through Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to how to join the meeting via Zoom, and you will please note that any audio, video, and screen sharing functions in Zoom will be disabled for all attendees. You may ask, however, to participate by using the raise the hand function. With that, I'm going to do a roll call of our members, and we have a full board of members tonight of all the regular members, and we'll call first on Sean Igo. You're present?
Present.
John Mantoni, you're present?
Present.
Jay Frapery, you're present?
Present.
Dick Martin, you are present?
Present.
And I am present. So everybody's here, and we're going to try and get through this agenda as quickly and reasonably as we can. And so we're going to start off with a real quick one matter, and that is petition 5051. It's a matter continued from September 28, 23. Renee Marshall Bryden of 341 North Main Street, South Yarmouth, Mass., that property being in a zoning district R40 and within the APD Aqua for a Protection District. The applicant seeks a variance from 401.1.1 and 401.1.2 of our zoning bylaws to allow renovations to a camper on her property. This matter was reported by the Building Commissioner's Office with the following memo dated November 7 and signed by Tim Sears, Deputy Building Commissioner. The Building Department conducted a site visit in the property today to the property today and confirmed that the camper has been removed from the property. In light of that, Ms. Bryden notified Dolores, our wonderful board secretary seated to my right, that she wished to withdraw this petition without prejudice, which is usually readily granted. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
And I'm assuming nobody on the board needs to discuss the motion made and seconded, right? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, carries unanimously. If it weren't for paperwork, we could be out of here much earlier. That's all right. There we go, yeah. That brings us to our second matter, for those keeping score, and that's petition 5058 out of Maureen Brown. Excuse me, 1 Mayflower Lane, South Yarmouth, Mass., property being located in a zoning... You come right up to the table, please. Yeah. In an R40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 407 to create a family-related accessory apartment. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement of a certified plot plan less than two years old. And would you identify yourself for us, please?
Maureen Brown.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and tell us all about your petition?
I'm looking to get a family-related access apartment and a garage, which when I bought the place was already, the garage's door was already off it, and they had made it into a room. So I want to make an apartment for my sister to live in. Right now, she's in my house, but it's, we're twins and siblings don't get along, but twins don't get along worse. So I kind of wanted to have her own place.
Well, I guess it's a pretty straightforward request, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. So nevertheless, though, we have members that I'm sure are interested in asking you some questions, okay? And we'll start with Mr. Mantoni. Any questions about petition?
Just a couple. This diagram that gives the floor plan, the street, what's it, Mayflower?
Mayflower, yes.
So where would that be in direction to this? Would this be this way? To the right. Because on this older site plan...
So that would be if you're facing the house, Mayflower's on the right.
And this here?
Yes.
Mayflower would be over here.
So if you're in the front door of where the garage is, the door going in?
Yeah. If you look on the next sketch, you'll see.
See this right here?
Site plan around here.
Right, right. So I have to tilt it this way then?
Yeah, that's along Wood Road right there.
Wood Road is where the garage is on.
Right. So I'm just trying to determine the doors here. So the door off the studio?
Yes.
Goes to the exterior, right? Or no?
It's in like a porch area. The door is inside the porch area.
Okay. And then the other one off the kitchen goes outside?
In the back, yes. There's going to be one outside.
All right.
That has to be put in.
312 square feet, is that what you calculated it to be? Okay, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sean?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay?
This is listed as the garage on that little site plan that you have, is that correct?
Yes.
And the door, the door will be coming out in that little bump out in the front?
The door has already been out when I purchased the place. So there's no garage door?
No, not the garage door. The door you're planning, the access door for the apartment?
It's going to be right, there's an overhang. It's like a porch area, but not enclosed. The door is coming right out on the side of the garage.
Like a breezeway?
Breezeway, yeah. It's not enclosed, though.
Yeah, okay. All right. And I guess you have all the, this is the family-related at this point in time? You did have some containers next to the garage also, I believe?
Yes.
Are those permanent or are those temporary?
The small one is, the big one isn't. Right now, the small one's holding everything that was in the garage.
Okay, so you're going to be moving one of those?
Yes.
That's all I have, thanks.
Fine, thank you. And Dick, any questions?
So there's two doors apparently into the apartment?
There will be two doors.
One issue, which I'm not sure if you've addressed or need to address with the Board of Health, there's three bedrooms in the house, right? And your septic system is for a three-bedroom. They'd be looking at the studio as counting as a bedroom. So I think you either need a four-bedroom system or take a wall down between two bedrooms in the house or...
Right, one of them's, it's a real small room, the third bedroom, which isn't used as a bedroom. It will not be...
One way or another, you're going to have to make the Board of Health happy that, you know, you're having a total of three bedrooms with this studio certainly being considered one of the bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Nothing else?
Nope.
I have no questions. You've explained it quite well. Oh, no, don't keep running.
Okay.
This is an open meeting. It's a democracy here in the United States. And so as part of that democracy, I now invite anybody who's in, would like to speak in favor of this petitioner, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience, whoa, please, come right up. We don't fool around here.
I didn't know she was coming as a neighbor.
You could have brought the dog with you, you know? I couldn't leave him home.
No, no, I meant you could have brought him to the podium.
Oh, he might tell his story. I'm Donna Anderson, and I live two houses away from Maureen. And I've been to her house, and I'm 100% to go at what she's doing. I'd like to see her have it done.
Well, it's awfully nice of a neighbor to come out and speak favorably for their friends and neighbors.
She's a neat little lady.
You know, you could better think, you could be home watching Jeopardy or Wheel of Fortune, right?
Or catching up on General Hospital.
Thank you very much for speaking. That's very nice. Does anybody else care to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. We now move it to that portion where we ask anybody that might be in opposition to the petition to please come to the microphone. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input. We open it up to board discussion and deliberations, and we'll start on the...
What? You need to read this letter?
Was there a letter here? Oh, that's one of the ones that I... There we go, I guess this is it. Are you talking about Don Marie's? Yeah. Okay. So this is a message from Suzanne Britta to board with the following comment, that with regard to petition 5058, which is requesting a waiver of the requirement of a certified up-to-date site plot plan, having the most current site and plot information as essential to the board to render a decision on the special permit application. I urge you no vote on petition 5058. Well, you know, I agree that it's nice to always have a plot plan, and we do, however, have a site and sewage plan that identifies all of the bounds of the lot and as well the location of the structures that are of particular interest to us tonight. So I thank Susan, who's always very astute and very helpful to this board, having been a prior member and one we miss thoroughly. But at the end of the day, I think we have sufficient information to think favorably on that waiver. And so is anybody prepared to make a motion relative to the waiver of the certified plot plan being less than two years old?
I'd move to allow the waiver.
Does the board care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that motion carries five in favor, zero against, which means that two-year waiver on the site plan is allowed.
Okay, thank you.
And so we're going to have now a second motion, and that is going to be to approve your petition one way or the other, and we'll know when people start voting. Is somebody prepared to make the motion?
I'll move to approve petition 5058 for a family-related accessory apartment as requested.
Second?
I'll second it.
A lot of action down this end of the table today, huh?
Make sure they're awake down there. I want to make sure that we're paying attention.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, let's pay attention this way, we're going to really shake it up. Mr. Igo? On the motion?
Are you asking if I have any discussion on the motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. I neglected to do that. Does anybody care to have any discussion on the motion made and now seconded? Mr. Igo?
The only discussion that I would add to this is that I believe that they've met the requirements under Section 407.2, subsection 1 through 9, as required under the bylaw.
It's actually much smaller than what's allowed, so...
I would concur that they have, and is there then now a vote by you, Mr. Igo, on the grant of the special permit as prayed for?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung is an aye, that's 5-0. A decision will be drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk's office. Once that decision is filed, 20 days must elapse thereafter. That's a technical waiting period in case one of your neighbors should rethink their position and appeal. And if there be no appeal, then you'll be asked to take the grant of the special permit to the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable, record it, and return proof that you've recorded it back to our board administrator, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you tonight. Don't want to mix things up here any more than I usually do. Forgive me for the delay, we'll bring the next people right up, please. It's Pine Cone Construction, Inc. for petition 5059. The property in question is located at 50 Park Avenue in West Yarmouth. That property is located in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify the special permit number 4930 dated February 1, 22, or for a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2 Subparagraph 2 or variance under 203.5 for front setback relief to allow a constructed home to remain as built with ten inch encroachment of porch. And my understanding is that Pine Cone Construction is unable to attend this evening, and they've asked for a continuance, and they have already signed an extension agreement, is that right?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure nobody minds that extension request, but let's have a vote on it if we could. And when's the extension due, Dolores?
January 11, 2024.
Okay. 2024. Wow. Time flies. Oh, boy.
You'd be lucky if you're here.
All right, so who's prepared to make a motion to allow the continuance as prayed for by petition?
So moved.
Do you have a...
Dick?
I moved. So moved.
Dick moves, second?
I second.
A lot of action down there.
You see, Mr. Igo has been on this board for so many years and has made so many motions.
They won't let me make any.
He's so disinterested in saying aye or...
He makes the difficult ones.
True. All right, and on that, let's take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to allow the continuance of the petition to the date stated, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nope. Didn't know I was doing it. Just bear with me, please. You don't have any choice really, do you? There we go. All right. Next petition is that of 5061 Congro Remodeling concerning property located at 17 Joyce Street in South Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in the R40 zoning district and as well. Whoever's here on that, come right up to the table. And as well within the Aqua for a Protection District. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2 Subparagraph 2 and/or a variance under 203.5 for front setback relief to build a 13 by 18 addition. Help me if I'm wrong, please. Paul Chabene again?
No, my name is Joseph McCullough. I'm a construction supervisor.
Well, it indicated here that Paul was going to be here as the project manager, but would you say your name again, please, and say it as loud as you can?
Sure, Joseph McCullough.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us all about your petition?
Yeah, what we are seeking is a special permit for this proposed addition in the front of the house here. It's an office space that we are seeking a special permit for.
Okay.
It's on Joyce Street, number 17. It's right on a corner plot with Fessenden.
Where is the natural front?
It's on Joyce Street.
Joyce Street?
No.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? All right. Well, then we'll now give it to board members to ask your questions, okay?
So we're not changing the bedrooms, this is an office area that's being added to the front bedroom, right?
Correct.
Okay. Was it looked at in terms of any other options in the property where that might be able to be added? I mean, I'm a little concerned about bringing the front setback down from 30 feet to 20 feet. You know, if it's a little bit, then we often grant relief, but 10 feet is a lot. And I'm just wondering if like at the back of the back bedroom would have been a more logical area. Appears to be away from the septic system enough, and you had a little extra room on that side as well, as opposed to encroaching as much as this is going to in the front yard?
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Martin, was the foyer is in the front, so it's just a natural addition to that. The frontage is normally 30, which we took into consideration on Fessenden Street. There's 30, just plenty of room there for that frontage. That's why we kept it at 18 and a half.
How far back is the foyer now from the street? I don't see that on here.
Well, you have, it's only 18 feet out, and then you've got 20 feet up. So that's 28, and that's well below the 30. So it's a natural, you've got 41.9 on the left, which is the...
So the foyer's an addition too, right? That's not there now?
No, this is the only addition. This is a small little office. That's the only thing that's going to the footprint of the actual pres.
Well, you see what I'm saying, though, in terms of the back of the house, it would appear that there's enough room there that some addition might be able to be done in that area or in back of the garage or somewhere else, as opposed to...
Well, the back has the septic in the back there.
Well, kind of in the middle of the back, but off toward where the...
Well, that's why we opted for the front, because of the septic right there where the patio is.
Well, I'm often not opposed to small, and the corner lot, I know, provides additional problems relevant to being able to do this, I understand that. But it's a pretty big variance that's looked for. I don't think it makes the house... I don't think it helps the looks of the house, for one thing either. And I'm just really not terribly comfortable with that much, you know, being 20 foot back from the street where there's 30 feet required on a lot that's relatively decent size that might be able to accommodate an addition up or out somewhere else other than in the front buffer. That was more of a statement than questions, I'm sorry.
Mr. Frapery?
I don't really have any questions. I have the same concerns Dick has. You know, something, it just, if they want to put it there, it's just going to be way too far in the front, as far as I'm concerned. I think we have some lots that can be 25, depending on how it works, but that just seems to be too much for me. So I don't really have any questions, but I have concerns. I think there should be another place you could put this.
Well, I'm going to chime in when I usually don't, until it's the last. And I can tell you that I am absolutely opposed to any relief in this instance. We have traditionally and almost universally denied any such relief in the entire tenure I've been on this board, which has been more than a year or two, I guess by now. And, you know, there's a reasonable and alternative space to the rear. As I'm looking at the house from Joyce Street to the right rear, it would seem that you're out of the leach and field there, potentially in the back of the garage, between the garage and the Bilco. And while it may be more readily ease of use for the homeowner to have it in front, I just can't in good conscience, when we've told everybody else no, find a reason to do it here. There's no hardship that I'm seeing, so... But we'll pass it along, maybe other board members will feel differently. Mr. Igo?
Well, first off, we could not grant a special permit here. This would have to be variance relief, because this is a brand-new non-conformity. Yeah. And I don't think the petitioner actually meets the criteria for variance. I do have the same concerns about encroaching that far into his front setback, and I do think that there's a reasonable alternative at the rear of the garage. This is an office that you're looking for, so there's going to be business conducted in that room, correct?
Correct, it's an office.
If there was a hardship that even a bedroom, I'd have a hard time justifying it unless there was a compelling reason. But there's an alternative. If you need an office on the property, I think you can build it behind the garage, and you would probably need relief for that because you're...
A little setback relief, yeah.
Yeah, you're about two feet plus encroaching into the side setback, having two sides and two fronts on a corner lot. I would be inclined to grant that relief, and that you could get by special permit because there's already a pre-existing encroachment of the garage into that setback.
That's off the garage is where you recommend?
But right to the rear of the garage, yeah.
Not to the left of the bed, the two-bed?
It might go there, too.
You could possibly put it...
It's the alternative we have.
Or you could probably put it there as well, if you wanted to put it...
Bedroom two, right?
If you put it on the opposite side of the garage, you wouldn't need any relief.
You're more concerned with the Joyce Street than with the Fessenden Street.
I'm not even sure that you'd need relief for that, because you're meeting setbacks in the, on all sides except that one side, and I'm not sure if the building department would make you come back.
Thinking again, you'd need relief because it's a non-conforming structure.
Yeah, you'd probably come back, but I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think I could support that if you want to move it to the rear of the bedroom or the rear of the garage.
Okay, so from my understanding...
Hang on, we got one more member.
I'm sorry.
We want to hear what his thoughts are on it, too. We'll give you a full hearing, yeah.
I don't have anything there. I agree with the rest of the board. I think you should really put that office in the rear of the building. There are a couple, yeah, either behind the garage or the bedroom number two, so...
So you can hear the flavor...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But not on Fessenden Street. That frontage there is, you would refer to be behind the actual residence.
It'd be good if it maintained the 30-foot setback on Fessenden Street. Gives you another four feet to work with.
You'd have the same problem on Fessenden Street as you do right now on Joyce Street.
That's what I'm getting to. If it's going to be the same problem on Fessenden that it's right now on Joyce, then what you're proposing is just...
Not if it's mostly in back of bedroom two.
Right, okay.
Or in back of the garage.
Very good.
So you can get a sense of the board's unlikeliness to grant this relief tonight. I'm a definite no, and if one more person says they're a definite no, we can tell you that if it came to a vote, would you be a definite no, Mr. Igo?
I would, too.
So you can see that it probably, if forced to a vote this evening, you would be denied the relief, which is something that you might not be to the benefit of your homeowner. So if you want to... So if you want to withdraw this petition without prejudice and come back at a time or even ask for continuance and come back with a different plan.
Let's do a continuance.
Okay.
And with different, you know, we could speak to the architect about it and actually.
Sure, save you the money and your homeowner's the money and the like.
Absolutely.
Get on another agenda pretty quick. We want to try to, you know, help you if we can, but.
Absolutely. No, I'm looking at the recommendations. I think behind the garage is where you're pointing, and I can see that.
Yeah. It's not necessarily that that's where we want to see it.
No, but as far as having the frontage on Fessenden Street, it might run into the same problem if we put it right on that bedroom, right on the street.
You get within thirty feet of the street, yeah?
Correct, yeah. And like you said, only four feet to play with.
Yeah, but then in back of the room, too. You'd have some room.
All right, well, let's wait till we see the new plan and the new configuration. Do we have a date that he could come back?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it would be January eleventh, twenty twenty.
January eleventh?
Very good, thank you.
All right, no, not yet. You got to sign a continuation agreement, okay? And then I'll as well endorse it, and we'll get us all you get audience. If you just walk over to the lawyers, thank you. This is saying that you agreed to this continuance to January eleven. One eleven twenty-four, wow.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Does anybody prepare to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we continue this matter for further hearing until January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
All right. Let's do a voice vote on this. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, it carries unanimously. We'll see you January eleven, okay?
Thank you, good.
Thank you.
I'm stepping down for the next one, Mr. Chairman.
Dick's got to leave this minute.
So the next is five zero six-two, that of Kurt Baker at thirty-three Hatch Road, South Yarmouth. And for that, there is a board member that needs to recuse himself. That's Mr. Martin. And as I understand it, it's because he's an abbot to the property. So this property is located at Three Hatch Road in South Yarmouth. That is a R forty zoning district and is within the Aquifer Protection District. Tonight, our applicant seeks a variance under four oh one point one point one and four oh one point one point two to allow a camper to be stored in the front of his property. Whoever's the petitioner, if you come right up to the table. Go right ahead and tell us what your petition is.
So what I'm trying to do is I have an older camper that I've replaced. I'm trying to get it fixed up. And I have my current one in the location in front of that. So I'm just trying to get a little more time to fix up the old one, so I could get it out of there and move my current one back. It is placed on the other side of the garage as it should be. It's just not back all the way. I do have pictures of it as well, if you need to see that.
Do we have any kind of picture or anything that shows us where it's located?
I do in my phone. And I also have a letter from one of my neighbors as well. I believe they emailed it in. I have a copy of it here, if you need it.
Well, see, we can't keep your phone, though, that's the problem.
Gotcha, nope, that's fine.
So how far out into your front yard does it encroach?
It is probably about thirty-five feet in front of my garage, I'd say. But tucked off to the side where there's bushes.
Okay.
Separating property lines.
All right. And you are here by virtue of the building inspector presenting you with a violation notice, is that right?
Yes.
A zoning violation notice? Okay, and that would be by way of a letter dated September seven, two thousand twenty-three from Tim Sears, the deputy building commissioner. I'm glad to see you acted on it right away. That doesn't mean you're going to get relieved, but I'm glad you acted on it right away. So let's see, the board members, I'm sure, are going to have questions. And we'll start first with you, Mr. Frapery.
So you have you have two trailers currently on the property. One is even with the front and goes backwards, but it's right on the property line also, isn't it, pretty much?
It's close to, but still on my property line.
Yeah, but just right next to it. And this one is fully in front of that and in front of the house, from what I understand.
Yes.
I drove by today, so that's what it looked like. The front one is the one, which one is the one you're working on?
The one behind the one in the front. I'm fixing that one up to sell to get rid of it. And then I'm going to try to.
Move the other one back.
The one in the front back to where it should be.
Okay. How long do you think that's going to take?
Probably two months at the most, if that. I'm just trying to rehab it. It had a water leak, so I'm fixing up some walls and some ceilings on it, and then I'll be complete with it.
You think within two months you'll have it off the property, is that right?
Should, yes.
Okay, I think that's the only questions I have.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
He's gone, he's gone.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry, sure, of course. I just recused himself, I haven't seen.
If you'd like, I could be Mr. Martin right now.
No, we'll leave you with your identity, please. We don't want to change your identity. Mr. Igo?
No, actually, the question that I had for the petitioner is with J S. So you're going to have it out of there in two months?
Yes.
Okay, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Mintoney?
Yeah, I don't have anything further.
All right, I have no questions, pretty straightforward. I do have correspondence that I'll read into the record, please, and that is one dated eleven four twenty-three by Mark and Kathleen Fontaine. "We are writing this letter in support of Kurt Baker and his application to seek a variance to allow a camper to be stored in front of his property. We live directly across the street at thirty-four Hatch Road and have no issues with this request. Kurt's yard, home, and camper are always well taken care of and present no problem to us as his direct neighbors. We support Kurt and his family in this request." On your side yard, are there arborvitaries or something there with the full length up to the street?
And then some, yes.
Okay. All right, so we come then to we also have something from a Marjorie Putvin. And Marjorie says, "My husband and I object to the variance, and they are located at fifty-seven Astaway." From Susan Britta, she chimes in with a petition five zero eight is requesting a waiver of the requirement of it. No. Why is this in here?
Mr. Chairman, she had two in the same email.
Sorry. "I urge you no vote on petition five zero six-two in order to preserve the residential character of Yarmouth's neighborhoods."
I had one more question, is that right?
Sure, of course.
You're not, are you using either camper for living purposes?
No, just for going away here and there for vacations.
Okay, because I think one of the things you requested was a provision for being able to live in the camper, if I remember right. Like.
No.
Isn't that four oh one point one point one?
I haven't read it. Is that what it says? Well, in any event, as you're looking at that, is any, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none, does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? Come right up and let us hear what you have to say. Now, we've seen you earlier tonight, didn't we? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were here. I saw you earlier.
I cut my face, I guess. Good evening, my name is Carol Cox. I live at thirty Hatch Road. And our Hatch Road, I would say, is divided into thirds as you go down the street. On the corner of Copley and Hatch Road, there is a large trailer that is housed there. The son of the owner of the home owns that trailer, but it's parked there. Now, I am three houses down from that corner. Across the street, straight out on the right, there were two of these large trailers. The owner of those claims that he owns both of them. However, periodically, one or two of them go off the property and they are home. No idea. Now, this new one is going to be two houses to the right of me on that corner. I don't have anything against people enjoying their recreation and everything. But I've been in my home for forty-five years, and it is my home, my property. The taxes went up because of the new school. If I ever have to sell that home, because I'm eighty years old now, when people start driving through this neighborhood, we're living in a trailer park. There is parking up on White's Path in the storage area for boats and large motorhomes. And I believe, and I'm not firm on this, behind the old DeAngelo's shop on Route twenty-eight, there are some repair shops with areas for parking. And I just think that a fourth trailer in there is not going to help any of us that live in there.
You're talking about the one that's here at Mr. Baker's property? Okay, so before you leave the microphone, though, you know, if you have a concern that there is parking of trailers illegally or contrary to the zoning bylaw requirements within your neighborhood, you feel free to go to the building commissioner. That's what he's there for, and they act very responsibly about these things, okay?
People have been in the neighborhood and looked at things. And because the two on that property both have licenses on them, he claims he's either working on them or doing them, whatever he's doing, so.
Matty, you can't have two on your one residential property.
He's got two of them on the property right there.
Okay. But thank you very much for your input, I appreciate it. Does anybody else in our audience have any statement they'd like to make in opposition to the petition? And identify yourself.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Dick Martin, South Yarmouth, fifty-five Hatch Road.
Uh-huh.
And just because you don't have pictures, let me just hand these out.
Thank you, thank you.
And this is the one across the street, which is also an issue there.
All right, so I've received, you want to come up and say them?
Yes, please.
So the concern is.
Wait a minute, please, Mr. Martin. Is this your property?
Yes, it is.
All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to stamp that for our file. And I just want you particularly to be aware that we're going to call that exhibit number one, okay? And that's a copy, that's a picture of the front of your home. And what is this, if you can identify it?
That's not my house, that's our neighboring house, if you.
That's a different one.
All right, well, that's what Mr. Martin said. I just want you to be comfortable with it, okay? And we'll now call that exhibit two, all right? All right, and if you go back to that table, I'd appreciate it. I'm going to publish this up and down, okay? That's exhibit two. Everybody has exhibit one, so. You go right ahead, Mr. Martin.
Yeah. As the previous speaker just mentioned, you know, my concern is that our neighborhood, which is a nice little modest neighborhood, is becoming kind of a trailer park. And these two trailers have been there a long time. Mr. Baker is very good with his property. The property looks nice, the house is nice and kept well, no doubt about it. But, you know, one of the trailers is fine, it meets code, it sits to the side of the side and back of the property. And two is just too much. They've been there a long time. The straw that broke the camel's back is when the other house came and brought another big trailer in. And because of a catch twenty-two, they're able to keep it there because of the corner lot and how they look at the facade of the house. So that, I didn't feel I could complain about that without complaining about this property as well, even though, again, Mr. Baker is taking good care of the property. Part of the problem also is both all the neighbors seem to have decided to take down all the trees. So these things are just sitting out pretty much in the open and much more visible than they than they would have been or were in the past as well. And, you know, and I would reiterate the fact that, you know, there are places for trailers and campers and boats, for that matter, where they don't have to go against the bylaw, like up at White's Path, and that's a proper place to be done. If we could have some definite assurance that it's going to be moved within a reasonable period of time, I'm probably comfortable with that. But there's just getting to be too many trailers in the neighborhood, and I can't see any way that this meets the criteria for variance. There's any hardship is self-imposed. There's no issue with the lot in terms of size or topography or anything else that should affect the property. And certainly, and I'd have to say, I also speak for a number of my other neighbors, two of which are already in Florida, that have expressed concern about this property and the other property, which is on the corner. But that's another story in terms of how the bylaw needs to be written to take care of that issue. But whatever, I don't think it meets the criteria for variance. If it's just a timeframe that Mr. Baker needs a little more time to deal with it, I can probably live with that personally. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Martin, before you leave, you know that this board in the past has taken that position. If we can get a hard number of days within which it can be moved, particularly in the wintertime, where more often than not, we'd consider that if it's a reasonable period of time, so. But thank you for pointing that out as a possible.
Thank you.
Resolution to this. I see someone else who's itching to get up. No, okay. We don't want to take anybody's time away from the microphone if they want it. So does anybody else care to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input and then open it up to board discussion and deliberation. And to try to steer this to a logical conclusion, I don't know what you board members think about sixty days. To me, it would have to be a hard sixty. If it's not there, the enforcement provisions go on immediately. And they would not be, I would, I personally would not look in favor of waiving a single dollar of them. But in the past, we have dealt with this. If there's a reasonableness to it by allowing a continuation of the petition, there's certainly no way you're going to make it, get a vote for a variance. You don't meet the criteria. I think I speak for the whole board for that, but I speak for myself with certainty. And you wouldn't win the vote, because I'm a no on it. But what are your thoughts, Mr. Frapery, about giving him a continuance for those sixty days?
I'm comfortable with the continuance, because the variance, first of all, there's two different things he's asking for. One is would be a variance to be able to basically make it a habitable residence, and that's the first one. And that's definitely a no, so.
That's definitely a no, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, I never.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
You want to get it if you ask for it.
Yeah.
In either case, you know, I think, you know, just a continuance makes sense, but sixty days would be the maximum. I would be comfortable with also.
Mr. Igo?
I'm fine with sixty days, just as long, and anybody that if they're wondering if they come before us and ask for a variance, the answer is no. And whether it's a camper or a boat or anything else that doesn't meet the criteria, it needs to be behind the corner, the front corner. Generally, in the past, we've given sixty days or what have you, because there's been a hardship. Is there any hardship here?
Just a little bit of a health issue, but other than that, I'll have it reconciled.
Okay, because I don't think we should have a sixty-day rule all the time. I think there should be a reason to give sixty days.
Nope, I think that he put out the number as which struck me as reasonable, if you. Is it gutted on the inside, or what's the status?
It's already rehabbed, I just have to put all the new stuff up, which I have in there.
Well, I mean, I'm not a carpenter, so I don't know. I'm just a stupid lawyer. But, you know, in my mind, sixty days is an excessive. But I'll defer it, I'm going to defer it to all you board members on what you want to do about the sixty days.
No, I'm fine with the sixty.
I think the sixty's fine. Yeah, I think I'd agree, sixty. You're doing all the work yourself?
Yes.
At the sixty-day point, what's going to happen? You're selling it, you're moving it, what's going on?
If it's not done, I will move the one that I have in front to one of my friend's houses in another town.
Well, let's make it crystal clear. If there are two on there on day sixty-one, you're going to get fined.
Yes.
Okay, there's no doubt about that, we understand that. All right, what's the closest we can get to sixty days? Are you inclined to want us to continue this for the sixty days, then?
But I also.
What you're asking us to do?
But I also want to make sure neighbors are okay with, once that's out of there, my new camper will be tucked away next to the garage.
Well, that's legal.
Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure.
And what's our closest to sixty days? January fifth?
I think it's January eleventh, right?
January eleventh, okay. Well, we don't, we don't have to have it by our calendar. We can just do sixty days from now, it's got to be moved. If they come back here on the eleventh, then it's not moved.
Oh, that's up to January eleven?
Yeah.
What, how many days is that?
Sixty-two.
I guess we can go two more days to hear from you, that it's been. I guess we can go two more days to hear from you that it's been moved.
So moved.
And I think, I think it's on your, or your part that you have to come and give us definitive evidence of a current picture that it's been moved, something we all can take and put in our file. And you're going to need to sign an extension agreement once this vote is taken and made, okay? So why don't you go over and sign that extension agreement? And who's prepared to make a motion? It's Mr. Igo moved?
I'll make a motion. We give sixty days to move it, and also that we'll ask the building department to make an inspection on the sixty days to make sure it has been moved, like Deputy Sears did for us on the prior one.
Madam Administrator, did you hear that part of it?
I'm sorry, sir, no.
That you, the building department be asked on the sixtieth day to go over and look? That would be, I guess, a Tuesday, so that business day, they could do that. Oh, did I get Exhibit Two back, by the way? Somebody pass that back to me. That was the second picture of the neighbor's house across the street.
I don't think I have it. I passed it that way.
You might have it, Sean.
Wait a minute, hold on. Put it back there.
It's all right. It's all right. It's, it's not critical by any discuss, out of the discussion. He's a lawyer, too. You've got to watch him close, you know? All right, that, we need to vote on the motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the carries... I'm sorry?
He's gone. Oh, no, there he is.
Carries unanimously on a four-o vote. We'll see you on January eleventh. Okay? Thank you. Brings us to our last matter, that of Harbor Club DBA Tugboats Restaurant.
He doesn't have to come back on January eleventh.
Yeah, I'm, come up, sir, for just a moment. Okay, if you've moved it, okay, and the planning board is going to go over there on the sixtieth day and say, just...
Yeah, you don't have to...
Satisfied you don't have to come in, we'll just dismiss it at that point, okay?
Dismiss it at that point.
That dismiss it would be without prejudice. It's of little consequence to you, though, okay?
No, bro. You didn't need to be here, ask for it.
So we get petition five-zero-six-three, that of Harbor Club Incorporated DBA Tugboats Restaurant. That property is located at eleven and twenty-one Arlington Street, West Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in a BR-25 zoning district. Tonight, our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to one-oh-four-point-three-point-two, sub-paragraph four, for an N-three use to allow entertainment and live music at the restaurant. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for certified site plot plan less than two years old. Attorney Stephen Pizzuti is appearing this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Pizzuti. Always good to see you.
It's nice to see you as well.
Why don't you tell us all about your petition?
Absolutely.
Who's that fellow sitting next to you, by the way?
I am representing Harbor Club Inc. That is Mr. Wayne Kirker to my left.
Who that is? Hi, Mr. Kirker.
And to the rear back here is Ted Zambellis, who's managing...
Oh, yeah, I miss the Zambellis.
There. And one of the things I'd like to say right off the bat is, I'm really, really fortunate to be able to represent both of these individuals because they run an excellent, excellent operation. It's really proved by the fact that over the last thirty-five years, there's been not one violation at tugboats. This, this establishment, the use there, was actually confirmed back in the seventies by a special permit, where it was actually acknowledged that it was a non-conforming use from the fifties. And what we're seeking to do is simply to make the experience at tugboats a much more enjoyable experience by occasionally having some entertainment. One of the things I want to explain to you, because, in fact, in one, there were three letters that were written to the, to the board that were opposed to this. Two of them came from the same location. There were two owners that were actually like three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet away. The other, the other owner actually basically thought that there was going to be entertainment in multiple locations there. And one of the reasons why Hyannis Marina is one of the most successful marinas on the East Coast is because Mr. Kirker pays attention to detail like no other client I've actually ever represented. That's why it's a pleasure, because we spent so much time going through the actual locations in the establishment where possible entertainment could be. In other words, it wasn't one location, then all of a sudden, there's going to be a different location that pops up. Mr. Kirker spent so much time with Ted and myself to ensure that the locations that were noted would actually be beneficial for not only the experience for the diner, but also to minimize noise. The locations actually would be accessory or utilized for different various parties that there might be. There's not going to be constant entertainment there. One person, I think that one of the letters noted a nightclub. We don't need a nightclub. You know, it's not going to be a Compass Lounge.
Oh, shucks.
Those, yeah, I know. I know. I know.
I was allowed to drink at eighteen, and I drank at Compass Lounge.
Or maybe a Swamp Fox, or something like that. No, this is supposed to be nice dining. It's going to be to accent the dining there. And one of the reasons why tugboats is so successful is because it's a great family location. And I think the attention to detail is really exemplified by the number of favorable letters that you received. And what's the common thread in these, in these letters? It's that they pay attention to detail. They, the parking, the valet. Mr. Kirker insists that there's no parking on Arlington Street. The neighbors appreciate that. The neighborhood is actually in favor of this. It was wonderful to get the Civic Association to actually write a letter. And the, the three opposing letters, two of them, as I said, was in the farthest point. It's actually on the other side of Bayview, and on Newbury Street, on the last house on Newbury Street, and saying that, well, you know, the person was a professional in the theater or whatever. Well, I think that maybe he ought to go down to tugboats and enjoy tugboats, and he'll see the attention to detail. And one of the other things that I want to just mention is, the golden goose at the, at the Hyannis Marina is the boats. The boats. And the people, the yachts, the people that go down there. And one of the things that Mr. Kirker over the years, at least with me, when we're seeking certain relief, the boats are the most important thing to make sure that they're comfortable, that there's not a lot of noise. And, and that's indicative, again, in what we're trying to do here is, is minimize the amount of noise and still generate a nice experience for the, for the customers. And I don't think there's anything else really to say at this particular point.
What would be helpful is to tell us where in the facility are you going to be suggesting this entertainment?
There is a plan that was submitted with the, with the package.
Why don't you describe it to those people that are home in downtown?
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, to describe it, there's a location in the inner, inner dining room in a corner. There's a, another location...
Excuse me?
Yes. Oh, I thought you were, excuse me. The, there's a location on a deck that's, has an awning on it facing the actual office of the marina. There's a lot of parties, like baby showers, those type of parties, and they wanted the ability to have a vocalist, potentially, and a guitarist, to be able to entertain there if the people wanted it. And that would be on that lower deck. And then on the outside...
Where there's an outside deck?
Well, there's a, there's an outside deck facing the marina.
Yep.
And, and the location there was on the innermost portion under, under the awning and roof there. And it would be facing into the building. Any music? But again, it's not going to be dancing. There's not going to be rock and roll.
And the other location was in the bar, upstairs bar area?
Yes, and that's a small area where there would be probably one person up there.
You spoke of three letters in opposition. Are you aware there's a fourth?
No, I'm not.
Why don't you come up here and get it? You take it and feel free to read it whenever you think it's suitable to be read.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that's within the...
No, that's the same one.
Oh, it is? Okay. I see, I see my...
I have one of them going in there.
No, my clip, I think my clips just got connected. I'm sorry.
Are you the one you wanted to give me?
No. No. My bad.
So we're still ten to three. We're still ten to... Okay.
You're still ten to three.
Ten to three, yeah.
All right. I don't think that there's really anything else. Did you want to? I think I covered everything pretty much.
I think so. Two of the three are in the same house, I might add.
Okay.
Which is what I know.
All right. So I, I think we heard that, but thank you. All right, so it does... Mr. Mantoni, do you have any questions about petition?
Yeah, so you're asking for entertainment from eleven-thirty in the morning to eleven-thirty at night, right?
It's the window.
Right, right.
Certainly not constant.
It's not going to be all for twelve hours a day, but you're looking, in other words, if you had a bridal shower at noon time, you might have someone singing in that, in that area, correct?
Exactly.
And eleven-thirty at night?
Where it would end.
Right. And you thought about ending that a little sooner for the, for the neighbors?
Well, you know, certainly, we would consider that. You know, we've talked about potentially going to eleven o'clock, right?
Yes. The, I'm very convinced that the neighborhood isn't going to hear a sound, because it's, we, we're separated from the, from the neighbors by the building. So the two indoor, the two indoor dining rooms, if it's in one or the other, all we have to do is close the windows in one of them. The other one has got no windows that face the neighbors. And as far as the two smaller decks, where we know that we need to take the speakers and aim them back at the building. I can't afford to aim them at the boats, and I can't afford to aim them at the neighborhood. It's taken a lot of years to have, to, to, to be in the, to be in good graces with, with that neighborhood, and we're going to keep it that way.
Mr. Kirker, you said, I, I was under the impression it was two locations within the structure. Now I'm hearing that there may be bands out on the open deck?
Yeah, it isn't in an open deck. It's a deck under, under an awning. There are two decks under...
Okay, I, I'm talking about the furthest-most out deck where people go out and have lunch under the sun.
Yeah.
You're not talking about entertainment there, are you?
No, no, we're not. And, and of course, the, if we're having a small event, it would be in the upper bar.
Okay.
I think that one of the other things to note where you might be concerned about the time, it might be respectfully better to leave that to the licensing, because we still have to go to the licensing authority. And normally, the licensing, licensing authority would be the entity that would be concerned about...
But we impose it pretty regularly.
Yeah, okay.
We, we impose it pretty regularly. And if that's a problem, that's a problem. What can I say?
Sure.
All right, so Mr. Mantoni, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Igo, do you have any questions?
What type of entertainment are you going to have? Just so we're clear.
You know, party-type entertainment, light music, so that people haven't either anything from a, from a christening to a Christmas party, is that there's appropriate music.
So maybe a couple of...
The last thing, and I want the, and I want the board to know this, the last thing I intend to do is have a nightclub in this building or anything that's, that resembles a nightclub. We've got a good, a nice family operation going on, and that's the way it's going to stay.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Frapery?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Not, not for, for us. They're, they're looking for, they've asked for a special permit.
Yeah.
But this is a, this is a use change for the, is that a variance?
No, actually, five.
Change of use? Is the use allowed in this district?
No.
By special permit?
No.
Which should say right on the use table.
It's not.
Special permit.
That's why I'm asking.
It's a residential zone.
The residential zone, it says no for that, for...
Says no, but no, but what?
There's no...
No.
What's the N-three?
N-three.
N-three, it says no.
Well, it says, and what district does it say now? And what to it beyond that?
It's a residential zone, that's it.
It is a residential zone.
Residential zone. One of the, one of the points that I'd like to make is that this is...
It's R-forty, hold on, please. It's R-forty zoning district, is that R-twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I think.
So we come to R-twenty-five, and we look at it, and it says no in each case, right? And you're looking for what, N-three? And it says emphatic no. So it is then by variance.
Well, it's, it's... Go ahead. You want me to?
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So what it is, is because the use is non-conforming by special permit, what we're seeking to do is extend the use by special permit, which is what the, which is what the bylaw says, which is what the, if you look at my memorandum, the memorandum notes...
Yeah, but that's not the way it was posted and, and, you know, posted to the public, nor the way it reads on my agenda. Let's see how the petition itself asks. Because it, you know, it, it would probably need a modified petition, then, right? Or to change the petition?
Can you modify it?
Relief, special permit. You, you're looking for new relief, not to modify an existing special permit. I did this, did the original special permit talk about entertainment?
The original special, special permit did not, from nineteen-seventy-nine. The, the issue, though, that I'm offering to you is the fact that the, the bylaw is very, very clear that if you, that you need a special permit to extend or modify a special permit. If, if you looked at entertainment, entertainment, you would need a variance or a special permit for entertainment in any location. What that, when, when you look at that, at the, at the bylaw for the use for entertainment, that's really for like a melody tent type of...
Okay, I'm going to go to my legal counsel sitting to my left. What's your take on that, Mr. Igo?
Well, I, I wasn't aware of this, actually. This just came to my attention, but I think you're going to need a variance here, because you're not, you're trying to modify a special permit in residential district.
It doesn't say no, but BA by special permit. That's the problem.
Now, you might ask us for a variance, and we could consider that. I'm not saying that we wouldn't consider that, but I, I think it may have to be republished.
See, if it weren't a B-two, it refers to BA, meaning you could come before the Board See, if it weren't a B2, it refers to BA, meaning you could come before the Board of Appeals to get a, a, an allowance of it. BA under, B1 zoning district, BA under B3. And so, it's, and then in each of the other zoning districts, it calls for Board of Appeals' approval, but by special permit.
But if you have a special permit, as set forth in section 104 dot 3 dot 2 4, it says that a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use may be changed or extended by special permit, not by variance. I think the, I think the issue is, you don't have a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use for entertainment. If you, let's say that you, they changed the zoning, and you, tugboats already had entertainment. If you wanted to extend it or increase it in some way, you could modify that special permit, because you already have that use after a zoning change. But here, you don't have this use with tugboats.
And let me just ask you this question, though.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but according to the use chart there, any entertainment anywhere in the town would need some sort of relief, right?
No. Well...
No, not at all. That's what I was pointing out, is there are zoning districts that... Not, not by relief, by variance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Okay.
So the point I'm trying to make...
By special permit, you're right.
This is the point I'm trying to make, though, that when you look at that, at that bylaw, that's really for solely for entertainment, because if, if that wasn't the case, then every single restaurant in the town of, of Yarmouth would need to have zoning relief, when in fact, they get entertainment licenses all the time if they already have the use. So, so why wouldn't you request...
They get an entertainment license, that's between them and the Board of Selectment, but there are four zones in the town of Yarmouth where you can have them by right, and those are the VC1 through VC4. And those are, you know, mostly...
You need a special permit, you mean?
Yes, sure, mostly entertainment locales here on Route 28, and down on Shore Drive.
You'd still need a, you'd still need a special permit, though.
No. And those, it's a yes. The VC1 through VC4 are yes, meaning it's allowed use.
Yeah, they are allowed there.
What page, do you have the page?
Page 21.
Page 21. It's the pull-out section.
Yeah.
For which I apparently dropped a cup of coffee all over it. I see the stains. Hey, please don't, please don't misunderstand that we would love to vote on this tonight, but I don't think we can vote it on it. I agree with Mr. Igo's statement, that if it was, for example, a dwelling house, and this is the way I interpret that special permit provision of the bylaws, if there's a dwelling house, and you, it's non-conforming because it's too close to a sideline, okay? And you now want him to add in addition to it, and you come before this board by, and seek a special permit to do that. I mean, you know, Mr. Kirker's been before this board, and he knows we try to give him the relief that he's looking for, generally, but I think it has to be through the right vehicle.
Well... I'm just trying to find the...
Does it mean that we're not changing the proper use, having accessory use?
Um, yeah, where was the...
Page 21, N3 residential is what we're referring to.
And, yeah.
And this is important, certainly because of the criteria, and so if you have any authority that, as it should be, by special permit, and a change in the use table, then please go right ahead. I suspect that any place that has entertainment now, for example, The Cove, they came before us and got a relief via variance.
By the way, I love tugboats. Been there many times.
Well, if we, if we actually extended it to, to, we'd have to refile a whole new...
No, I think, you know, my suggestion would be that you ask for a, the quickest continuance we can give you. Is there anything available in two weeks, because Christmas is coming up? And that's the business, the end-of-the-season business for some of these businesses. Any way we can do, oh, two weeks of Thanksgiving?
Good.
Yeah, two weeks, Thanksgiving. Can they refile, how soon can they refile and republish?
If, the deadline for the December 14 hearing is November 22nd, at noon. November 22nd would be the deadline to submit for the December 14 hearing, in this year.
Okay.
So, could we amend the, we have to file a whole new petition?
Well, yeah, well, go ahead, I think you can amend it.
Yeah, I, I think you can amend it.
But it has to be re-advertized.
But it's still gonna be, it's still gonna be advertised, that's the thing, yeah.
And it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Because most of the time, most of the time, we're yelling at people, why did you give us two forms of relief requests?
No waiting yet for December, right?
The way that I had looked at that was...
Oh, I get it.
Was that you needed, you needed relief anywhere in the entire town, and because we were expanding, or, you know, a, a non-conforming use?
No, I think you're, I think your thought process was very well conceived. I just think Mr. Igo has a, has a much finer point that makes sense to me, at least, and...
And I agree.
I would have initially said...
Sitting on the right side of the bench.
I mean, I don't know, it, it, I would love nothing more than to take this matter to its, its, to its conclusion this evening.
I understand.
But it has to be the right way.
So, can we, we can do this on December 14?
You could, Mr. Igo, we could have a sixth petition on December 14.
Well, we've heard most of it, it's just gonna come back to us with a change, and if we approve the change, then it's gonna come back to us for the substantive aspect of the vote, right?
Right.
I mean, we're not anticipating a whole bunch of new evidence on it, right?
So, yes, so, just to confirm, we're gonna come back with a variance request?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You can ask for both, you know, in the alternative, you can leave the special permit request there, but I don't think you're gonna, I, I, I listened to Mr. Igo, and I think he has been on this board far longer than I have, and I trust him.
I respect both of you, I respect all of you, so, we'll come back and we'll make it happen.
Sorry.
No problem.
Good, so you need to sign an extension agreement?
So it's gonna be on December, right? December 14th?
Is everybody gonna be able to sit that night?
I'll be virtual.
I'll be virtual, but I'll be here.
What is it, December 11th?
14th.
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 I think I can sit.
Hope so.
You have to ask Marion, my medical attention details. All the things my doctor's...
Can't get them in here sooner than that, Dolores? No way they can come in sooner than that?
Well, the next meeting would be Thanksgiving, is the problem.
Oh, right.
There is only one in the meeting, right? We don't have another one.
That's the first meeting in December.
Non-conforming, non-conforming use. There's nothing I can do.
All right, so we need to have a motion made to continue this matter to December 14, on the request of the petitioner, and having, the petitioner having signed a...
Second.
Extension request. We have Mr. Igo moving, Mr. Frapery seconding. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote of agreement to continue to 12:14:23.
Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you.
I do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. And to anybody that is here tonight that wants to speak in opposition to it, beyond a letter that you...
Oh.
Okay, you, you know, then wait, Mr. Zambellis, please, and, and wait, let's just hear what you have to say, if you can't be here December 11.
14th.
Uh, 14th. If you can be here December 14, you can wait till then. We're delighted to hear from you, but, you know, we wanna make it so that it's, if you're gonna be here December 14, we're gonna wait till input from the public till then.
I understand, I'm not sure I'll be here.
Okay.
So, I wanna make sure.
Did you write a letter in?
I did not.
You did?
I did not.
Oh, did not? Okay, then tell us who you are.
My name is Ann Simeoni.
Uh-huh.
My property's at 138 Bayview Street, and I am opposed. Tugboats has been somewhat of a, I mean, I've heard that they think they're good neighbors, but the neighbors don't think necessarily they're the greatest neighbors. We have traffic concerns, we have noise concerns, and this restaurant is in a residential neighborhood. And I would, I would caution you and appreciate it if, in any of your decision-making, you keep that in mind. I mean, it's taken years, and my family's owned this house for 65 years, and we have had one problem after another over the years with Marina and tugboats, and, and I just think that, you know, if you wanna continue to claim that that area is residential, then you have to keep it residential. And, yes, tugboats has gotten better. I don't have to call the cops every summer like I have in the past, so I guess that's a positive, but I'd rather keep it that way, and I would, I, I have serious doubts that any entertainment would be kept in a tasteful manner. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry you won't be here on the 14th, but if you are, feel free to come back, okay? Okay, so that now is continued to December 14. We did a roll call vote, yeah?
We, we did, yes, we all voted for that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure why we have this town of Yarmouth zoning decision here. Oh, are these just the minutes you're asking us to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 14th and September 28th. Second.
Well, I am going to, I think, recuse, oh, no, I was here on the 14th. I'll, I'll, I'll vote on it as it relates to the 14th, but not as it relates to the 28th. Are you prepared to make a, anybody prepared to make a motion to some...
So moved.
Oh, you moved?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Frapery moved, Mr. Igo second, and no need for discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes for 14 and 28 of September, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none. All right, and the last thing is... Oh, well, you know, I never get concerned about these, these amended complaints or complaints when the sheriff shows up. That's why we have town council. So, all right, that's it. Everybody can go home now.
It's too early, Steve. Never end a meeting this early. We gotta do...
Motion to adjourn, is there?
Motion to adjourn.
Helps when things are postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye.